All right.
Welcome to the Ridgecrest City Council Wednesday, October 15th. If I can have a roll call.
Mayor Endicott?
Whoa, hello.
Mr. Blades?
Present.
Mr. Roger Ottenham?
Present.
Mr. Hayman?
Present.
Mr. Gorman?
Present.
Five present and we have a quorum.
All right, next, do we have an approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second.
Please vote. Our five eyes, motion carries.
All right, if I could get you all to stand, we're going to say the pledge allegiance, and if you're going to remain standing afterwards for the invocation. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer if you will. Lord, thank you for giving us this opportunity to come into your presence. Lord, thank you for the responsibility you have given to the city council. And I pray for our country. Lord, I pray for unity in our nation and in our city. Lord, I ask you to heal divisions. I ask you to foster compassion, and I pray that you inspire citizens and leaders to come together, work together for justice and peace. Lord, I pray for wisdom for the leaders, courage to overcome differences, and build harmonious cities and states and societies in our country, Lord. As we discuss matters that are important to our community, give us your wisdom and guide us, and bless each one of us here today. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
All right. Next, we have public comments of items not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Council will not respond to any public comment but may provide direction to staff to collect information. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not act on an item that does not appear on this agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name.
Good evening, council. My name is Brenda from Ridgecrest 5051. I'd like to make an announcement for an event for this Saturday. Ridgecrest 5051 and Ridgecrest United will be hosting a No Kings event starting at 9:00 a.m. in Freedom Park. Join us for a morning where we will honor our country's constitution by listening to a lecture by Professor Endicott about it. Get inspired with hope for our future by listening to two candidates running for District Trony for the House of Representatives, Sandro Van Scotter and Patrick Robb. There are three candidates currently running against Fong. Two of them have decided to come here for our event. They could be other places, but they've decided to come to Ridgecrest because we matter. Bring flags, American flags, to celebrate our independence from kings. Wear yellow. Throughout history, it has been used as a symbol of collective strength in the face of oppression. And I have a big ask. If you have one of those inflatable Halloween costumes, serious bonus points for standing in solidarity with Chicago and Portland. After speeches, we will go on a 1.5-mile march. If you're unable to march with us, you can go straight to the corner at Denny's, and the rest of us will meet you there. Indivisible has a very strict no weapons at our events, and 5051 is very upfront by saying violence will not be tolerated. Political violence does not belong in our society. Speaker Johnson is on a smear campaign spreading lies about what No Kings stands for. Peaceful movements are also strategically more effective than aggressive ones throughout history. They've been seen as four times, with more, four times more participation, and they are twice as likely to be successful. We need to be approachable and open-minded to have conversations so that we can see each other as human beings again. Now, if trolls are yelling at you, that's not a conversation worth having. My favorite way to respond is with joy. They don't know how to process that. They don't know what's happening. People want to break your spirits. Don't let them. This is bigger than political disagreement. The Trump administration has defied our courts, deported Americans, disappeared people off the streets, and slashed our services. You can find out more information by going to ridgecrest50501.com or searching the hashtag NoKingsRidgecrest. See you Saturday.
Thank you. Are there any other persons wishing to comment publicly?
Good evening, council. My name is Stephen Le. I've been living here about 10 years, and I am the new local community organizer for Ridgecrest Toys for Tots. I'm hoping everyone's aware of what Toys for Tots is. I'm, we're currently serving Ridgecrest, Trona, and Indian Kern. Our core objectives, core mission is to provide toys to children in need, bring joy and hope with a gift of a new toy during Christmas to economically disadvantage children and send a message of hope, and also foster community and civic, civic responsibility, helping the children develop into responsible citizens and caring members of the community. The Toys for Tots Foundation's been around for 75 years. They've been supportive of all the local campaigns around the U.S. to make sure we reach out to every single city available. As part of this local campaign, all donations for toys and our sponsors stays within the community. I want to be very clear about that. It stays in Ridgecrest, Trona, Indian Kern, other areas like Johannesburg, Ransburg, Red Mountain. I'm actively working with the other nonprofits, including Indian Wells Valley Cert and other groups, working with Chamber of Commerce to ensure that children get served and they get a toy during the Christmas holidays. Families can request a toy. Right now, the campaign started October 1st. Families can request a toy from now until December 7th on our main website, ridgecrest-ca toysfor tots.org. And we have donation sites all over town. I have a meeting with other points of contact over in Trona and Indian Kern to make sure we can get all coverage. Donation sites and donating a toy, the deadline for that would be December 15th, and we'll start doing distribution before, right before the holidays. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I just have a question. Where can people donate? And are there any events that you guys are having?
So, on our main website, on the public accessible areas, it's on our website as well, Anna's Hair Design, Chamber of Commerce, China Lake Museum Foundation, Compassionate Couch, the Desert Empire Fairgrounds, Quinn's Hobbies, Shifu Martial Arts Dojo, The Fit Life, and there's some other private clubs and other organizations that also have boxes as well. We are participating in the Friday Night Market that's coming up next week, also the trunk or treat at City Hall. We'll also be covering Friday Night Market next month, and then also Center's art shop in December timeframe as well. So, I'm, I'm only one person. I, as of right now, I have about eight volunteers, and I'm reaching out to other groups, was it VFW? I'm meeting them this week, working with other groups to see how we can plan and have a great campaign, and then what we can do to make it better next year.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, then thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other persons wishing to comment?
I have a comment. It's actually a clarification on facts regarding the groundwater authority. And I don't know if I will be able to make the comment after the groundwater authority report. Would that be more appropriate then?
That'd be appropriate, Renee.
Okay, thank you.
Any other persons wishing to comment? Seeing none on the phones. All right, we'll move to council announcements and direction. Any members of the council have any announcements or direction?
Yeah, sorry, you're going to need to give me a moment. So, the fairgrounds? Yeah, it's having, of course, the fair. That's going to be October 17th to the 19th. I don't know, Rick, are they, is it zooming in on us now? Has it changed? Okay, so I can look at that. Okay, so, that's the flyer. For those of you out there on YouTube land, the pact is having, is sponsoring the Tunnel, Tunnel of Terror Car Wash, October 23rd, 24th, 25th, 30th, and 31st, and November 1st, 6:45 to 9:00. So, that's that. Where's the car wash? Yeah, you just wanted to bust my ch- so, the, at the Blue Rocket Express Car Wash, yeah. Yeah. So, I showed them. Trunk or Treat, they're still accepting vendors, so if you, if you're interested, that's going to be October the 24th, 4:30 to 7:30 at the Kermagie Center West Lot next to Freedom Park.
Thank you.
Booze on Balsam, happening October the 25th, 2025, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. That's Balsam Street, for the booze on Balsam. It's going to be a farmer's market pop-up, mariachi, variety of food, and treat vendor, silent DJ, and more. There's a long list of things. You can find it all on the city website. Fall Festival is going to be on the 29th of October. It's going to be the last day, City of Ridgecrest Farmer's Market. It's going to be Wednesday, October 29th, includes some Halloween fun. KTS Farmer's Market is launching November 1st. So, and they are seeking vendors. There's a scan here, so I'll just share it, zoom in, pause. Regional West Coast Hoop Dance Championship, November 1st to the 2nd, at the Desert Empire Not yet. Ridgecrest Regional Hospital Community Cleanup, November 15th, from 8:00 to 10:00. Meet up at 8:40 South China Lake Boulevard. We're almost there. There's going to be a ribbon cutting at the China Lake Museum, 8 November, 2025, at 11:00 a.m. There's going to be a lot of things going on, so celebrate this major milestone of the China Lake Museum Foundation's history on the day that marks the 82nd anniversary of the establishment of the Naval Ordnance Test Station, NOTS. The 56th Annual Children's Christmas Parade, Unity in Our Community, Saturday, the, December the 13th, entry is due by the 8th. Complete.
My, I guess, announcement or direction, I do welcome, I, I hope a lot of people come out for the No Kings event on Saturday. I am going to be rehashing one of my old lectures on the failure of the Articles of Confederation. We'll talk about Shay's Rebellion and how that led to the creation of our Constitution. And then we'll get into a little bit about what Madison and Washington warned us about, about factions in our country. Again, this is just a rehash of one of my old lectures. I am not speaking as the mayor. This is as my, as my, putting on my professor hat and just providing information. So, I, I welcome anyone to come out. I will be, as I, as I have sat here many times before and talked about, that there is a lot more that unites us than divides us. And, you know, we, I think it would behoove all of us to, to focus on those things that unite us than divides us right now more than ever, because this country needs to come together, and that can start at the local level. And, and I hope that at least one person hears what I have to say and goes out and talks to someone that they disagree with, and you can have a disagreement, and you can have it civilly, and then you can walk away still friends. So, that's that. Next, we have the consent calendar. All items listed on consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. There are four consent items, and they are listed on the posted agenda and behind me. Does any member of the council wish to have an item pulled? Does any member of the public wish to have an item pulled? Seeing none. If I can get a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and second?
Travis and Scott?
I hit it. It didn't hear you. It didn't do yours.
Five eyes, motion carries. Thank you.
All right, moving on to discussion or action items. We'll start with number five, discussion regarding the Board of the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. Councilman Hayman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the groundwater authority did meet on Wednesday, October 8th. We had one, one primary agenda item, which was adoption of the, the review and adopt the 2026 budget, which it was adopted. And so, I'll give you a couple highlights of that. Overall, I think we were down, net decrease of about 200,000 on expenditures, which was good. One of the areas that was kind of an attention getter is the amount of legal fees. We're estimating approximately 1.7, 1.875 million in, in legal expenditures. So, we are hoping to see that go down in the near future. It's kind of disheartening to see that so much money has to be spent in, in battling the legal aspects of it, but that was primarily it. So, that was approved. We had the Water Resource Managers Report. Progress continues to be made on the planning and development of the inner, the pipeline project. Blue Mountain Management had their kickoff with the Water Resources Manager. They will be assisting and working with the Army Corps of Engineers in the pipeline project. There was a 2.7 and something million dollar grant that was approved, and that will be used to help with the remaining of the planning of the, of the project. What else did we do? Nothing's really changed too much up north, as far as the, the wells going in up in the, near the coastal region of the basin. We're still waiting on BLM permits, and I believe that pretty much concludes the, the report, so relatively quick.
Are there any questions from the council?
I'm sure the GA is tracking the passage of AB 1466.
Yes, and that AB 1466 was passed, which I think we'd reported on in the past meeting, but it was just waiting to be signed by the governor, which the governor did sign it. And so, I'd just like to make a comment, too, that with the groundwater authority was very pleased to see the water district move from opposition to support of that, of that bill. I think it's a landmark bill that will help the small well owners in the valley who aren't represented by, by council, so.
Yep. Yep, and I think what we hope to see, hope to see 1413 revived.
And that's a possibility. Come January, there will be new committee members and a new chair of the committee, and I think that we'll be revisiting AB 1413.
Good, hope so.
All right, any members of the public?
Okay, my comment is, my name's Renee Westalusk, and I sit on the Policy Advisory Committee for the ground, the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. And I've been on this committee since, I think, August of 2017. I heard this secondhand at a meeting of another organization I'm in, that they were criticizing the posting by the City of Ridgecrest on their social media site, some documents from the groundwater authority. And I wanted to give you the history on why that happens. It's because the Policy Advisory Committee was tasked by the Groundwater Authority Board at least two, maybe two and a half years ago to rewrite the communications and engagement plan for the groundwater authority. And we had to cover all methods of communication in coming up with the plan for the GA to follow. So, we visited the topic of social media. At that time, most of the Policy Advisory Committee were against doing social media by the GA because it would be too much to monitor. We'd have terrible comments, people putting terrible language if it was a two-way communication. Also, they were worried about having threats, okay, against the GA. And this, there's valid reasons for these worries. So, anyway, they came up, we reviewed as part of our putting together communications and engagement new plan for the GA. We had copies of other groundwater authorities' communication engagement plans, and among them, there we, I think we looked at five other engagement plans, and most of them didn't have social media on their own. They piggybacked off of other government agencies in their area that allowed them to post documents or information to the public, and it was a one-way communication. There wasn't going to be a setup of two-way, where someone could comment and post against for or against whatever you posted on the social media website. So, we decided to follow that. Our recommendation was to either ask the City of Ridgecrest or the County of Kern or another government agency in the area to allow us to put, post. And, and the GA did ask, I'm sure the City of Ridgecrest at that time, if this was all right to do. So, that's how that got started. But, I heard a comment at this other meeting of someone who has never gone to any GA meetings, never gone to any water district meetings, is trying to claim they're in the middle of the road when they're not, they're taking sides, and they thought the social media post that was on the city's website should have also shown some, the same issue, only the, the water district's view or whatever. That is not part of this package. I just want to let all the councilmen know, in case you're uninformed, because not all of you, I don't think, other than Scott Hayman and Peggy Breeden, have gone to GA meetings consistently. So, you don't really know what is accomplished at those meetings and what the subcommittees have done in the past, et cetera. So, I just want to set the record straight. The only task that the City of Ridgecrest was going to do for the GA was this one-way communication with social media. The job was not to take positions from the two water agencies, the groundwater authority and the water district, and compare them. That's not part of this. It was just a way for the groundwater authority to communicate on social media with the public. That's all it was. And I just want all the councilmen to understand where this originated from. And I'm just frustrated, I'm going to express my frustration, I've been to so many meetings, and it really upsets me when people who don't attend any of the meetings start making criticism, especially against the GA, because they don't know anything about our, our organization or the government, or the agency. So, my opinion is, people shouldn't criticize unless you are coming from a point of knowing the facts first. And that, that's my comment. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Renee. I'll just make a comment, too, that the GA in the previous meeting, not the most recent one we had last week, but in the meeting before, we had agreed to have a Facebook page, you know, for the GA. Those very concerns are, were the concerns of board members on the GA, members of the public, that, you know, Facebook turns in, it turns into, you know, highly critiquing, agitating, you know, environment. But, on the other hand, we only have so many ways to get out information, so I think we just have to endure it, keep getting the, the truth and the messages out there. Unfortunately, it's part of the current status of communicating, so. But I do appreciate you coming up and clarifying the use of the, you know, the GA using a city, you know, platform to, to, you know, get information out that's so important to the members of the community. The same people that complained about using it or would probably complain about us not putting out information to the public, you know, so it's, it is what it is. But again, thank you.
All right. Any other persons of the public wishing to make a comment? All right, we'll move on to, I, oh, there is a green light. Okay, thank you. We have a caller?
About using it all, but probably. Hi, you ready?
You're on.
I am, okay. This is Mike Sonat, and I'm going to give you some facts, and if they're, if I'm wrong, I'll make corrections. I put this up as a post on Roadrunner 395, and I'll start off by saying it's safe to say that you can put a fork in the Indian Wells Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan. Here's the bad news. The residents of Ridgecrest have been paying for a wastewater treatment facility for over 10 years. It hasn't been built, and the recycled water project that was part of the GSP has been scrapped. The residents of Ridgecrest and customers of the water district have been paying GA fees totaling over $17 million to buy water rights from the San Joaquin Valley. None of that water has been purchased. That's actually the only good news for the GA. The audit of the GA's 2024 financial statement is long overdue. The engineering design of the pipeline and the environmental assessment costs have run over budget, and the GA is running out of startup money that the Department of Water Resources provided in the form of a $7 million grant five years ago. The AVEC pipeline that the GA plans to build has been delayed due to an incomplete environmental assessment application with the BLM. The GA can't tell you what it will cost to build and maintain this pipeline until all the design and environmental work is finished. The city and the GA are desperately trying to avoid adjudication of the recharge and the groundwater and storage in the basin. I won't take the time to itemize the total complete failure of County Attorney Phil Hall's and City Attorney Keith Lemieux's legal strategy and the embarrassment and loss of trust resulting from the actions of Supervisor Philip Peters, City Manager Ron Strand, City Clerk Reece Ricker Charlon, Councilman Scott Hayman. Clerk Reece Rika Charlon, Councilman Scott Hayman, and Councilman Kyle Blades. I would only ask Councilman Blades, are you feeling pretty good about all this now? The GA illegally assigned Navy's Federal Reserve water rights to the water district that did not exist, and now the entire groundwater sustainability plan has effectively been blown up. It's dead, and the judge will have to sort it out. The good news is for the residents of Ridgecrest is that Inyo Kern and Trona are happy with the adjudication decision on Federal Reserve water rights, and the Indian Wells Valley groundwater basin will be properly and legally adjudicated. The water district has filed a reverse validation action, which means that they will be able to go to the judge with their science and model, and the GA will be able to defend their science and model, and the best science will win. Finally... I'm sorry, I lost my place. Finally, the Indian Wells Valley Water District will be merging with the Inyo Kern Community Services District by order of the State Water Board. This is great news for Inyo Kern because the Indian Wells Valley Water District is financially solid, and the state will assist in funding the merger, and the water district is an award-winning water agency. They will also do a great job for the people of Inyo Kern. I won't predict the future, but it appears that the Inyo Kern merger will make the Indian Wells Valley Water District the water manager for the entire Indian Wells Valley. In conclusion, the Ridgecrest City Council should jump at the opportunity to resolve any conflicts with the water district at their earliest opportunity. The redevelopment of Inyo Kern's water system will stimulate economic opportunities for the entire Indian Wells Valley, including the city of Ridgecrest. Finally, you don't need to build an infeasible $400 million pipeline to import water from the San Joaquin Valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anything I said that was incorrect, I'll stand corrected now. Councilman Hayman.
No comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other persons wishing to comment? No more callers? Okay. All right, we will move on to item number six, proposed approval of increased appropriations to the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Acting City Manager, Travis Reed.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. What we have before you tonight is a resolution to add funds that we anticipated in revenue from the sale of unused equipment or surplus equipment. As you guys know, we brought an exhaustive list to you of equipment that was no longer in service, probably about two or three months back, and as well as multiple resolutions before that for surplus equipment. We found a government auction website, it got auctioned off, and we received about $64,000 in revenue. We accounted for that revenue in the budget as far as revenue goes, but we did not have it placed anywhere for expenses. So, what we are asking tonight is that we can place this in an expense account so we can use it towards other road projects. If you recall, when we did the budget, we removed funding for all of our HSIP, which are Highway Safety Improvement Projects grants, and we would like to use some of these funds to complete the bid documents for the HSIP project, which is including the Hawk Signal in front of Lost Flores School. The biggest reason why we're trying to do this now and not with all the other ones is because we got to time it right to where we can do this work over the summer when the school is not in session. And with that, I'm open for any questions.
It's a logical move. I appreciate you doing the work. It was a long list of stuff. I know you're going off to auctions, so I'm glad you got that much money out of it.
Well done.
My only question was, what projects would it be used for? Is the Hawk System near Lost Flores the only one that this could be used for, or is there anything else?
At this time, that is the one that we are planning on using the funding for. It will not take it all. As you guys remember, when we put the AHSC project out to bid, we had those improvements designed already. So, this is simply to finish creating the bid package and create its own specification package so we can put that out. And with the timing, this is the only one that timing is critical on, that we're asking to use those funds. If we do award a contract, obviously, we will come back to council to award that contract.
Okay. Any other council comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, is this a vote?
Yes, please.
Okay, do I have a motion to...
Motion to approve.
A second.
And a second, motion and second.
Please vote. Five eyes, motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. All right, next, we have our committee reports. The first one is the Economic Development Committee, their report from October 6th.
Yep. So, we discussed a great many things, but the actual result of the meeting, very little. Not a lot came out of it. We threw around ideas, we talked about what we'd like to see Balsam become, businesses coming in, going, and there's, we all can see the big things. We see Wendy getting built up, Wendy's getting built up, and that's a great, I love to see how fast it's going. When we met with them when ICSE, they told us they were going to move fast, and they weren't messing around. There's, on Balsam, there is discussion of a bakery going on Balsam, and I believe there's a not-quite-open-yet winos. Isn't that a place going on Balsam? But, you know, we'll see how that goes. What's that, Rika? It's okay. That's all right. From the RACVB, there was a report that somewhere around 1,200 visitors went to the car show after the parade of 1,000 flags, so I think that's amazing. That's good stuff. There was nothing else. Hold on, there was one more thing. By December, Town Place Suites should be open. End of report.
Next, we have the Finance Committee, their report from last night.
We did not meet.
It was canceled, never mind. The Infrastructure Meeting, their next meeting is October 23rd at 5:00 PM in City Hall Conference Room B on the first floor. And then next, we have the Parks, Recreation, and Quality of Life Meeting, report from October 7th. We had some new business on the agenda, trying to see what type of funds would be available to help Safegrad out, if there was any extra stuff that we could do that was going to be taken to staff to discuss, what else we could do to help them. And then our current business, one of the things that Councilman Hayman and I want to see until it's really going is updates on the Senior Center. We got an update, that a new part-time employee was hired. They started this last Monday here, well, I think they're at the Kern McGee Center, but they will start on the 20th at the Senior Center. They have a list of things for activities. Their new hours will be 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That'll be a one-month trial to see how the attendance goes with that. We had individuals come up during Quality of Life, asking for an earlier timeframe other than, was it 11 to 3, or 10 to 2?
Yeah, it was going to be 11 to 3, but...
We had some individuals that said that 9 to 1 would be a better use of time, and we'd get more participation. So, that's going to be a trial, we can test out how popular it is. And then we got an update on the outfield fencing at Leroy Jackson Sports Complex. We will have a ribbon cutting for that eventually, but it will be later on when more of the things are completed with it. And they brought up the trunk-or-treat, October 24th. But, Councilman Blades did a fantastic job in the announcements and direction.
I did not know that this is, this was going to be sitting here.
No, I got a text. See next to your desk, please read. One last thing that was asked for, for the Senior Center, was they were asking for a, the potential for a social security person to show up once a month for, at the Senior Center, for individuals to check in so that they don't have to go to Bakersfield or someplace equidistant. Is there anything else that I missed?
Public communication outreach for the seniors, we discussed that a little bit. Trying to get out to the seniors, more information about the Senior Center and the hours and events, or that type of thing. Public transportation to assist them getting to and from, so we're working on that. And let's see, what else? We did the hours, social security, and changed the hours to 9 to 1. So, we've had a pretty good turnout for the Parks meetings pertaining to the Senior Center. I think it's a very important topic for the seniors and for the city in general. I think everybody on a consensus basis feels it's a very important part of our community, and we want to continue to support our seniors. Also, there's movie night this Friday, starts about 6:40, kind of right at dusk, I believe. November 7th will be the last movie. And Farmer's Market, this part, it's on non-Flex Fridays, but maybe clarify that with me. Is that the city's, the city's putting on the, do you recall, Mayor?
So, the city's not putting on the Farmer's Markets effective November 1. Right now, we have a few left for Wednesdays, but after that, they're going to a new, a new organization is taking it over, it's called KTS Market, and they're going to be at the Tractor Supply on every Saturday. Don't quote me on the time, but 9 o'clock, I believe. But, that's who's taking it over effective November 1.
Okay.
And I think the last...
Here it is.
In his flyers.
And I think the last movie was last Friday, right? Or the last one that they did, and they joined with an organization that was making essentially Flubber while they watched Flubber.
Oh, yeah.
Sounded like an absolutely fantastic time.
Mayor, if I may comment, also, social security used to come to City Hall about seven years ago or more, and they stopped because of budget cuts, so it has nothing to do with us. They will have to reach out to social security and see if they're willing to come, and they can put that in their budget for them to happen.
Thank you. All right, moving on to others committees, boards, or commissions.
I typically take advantage of this line item to report on what I hear that's pertinent to us here in the Indian Wells Valley out of Kern Cog, but at the last City Council meeting, we had Jay Slasher, the CEO of Kern Cog, visiting here and gave a brilliant presentation on what they do, how they do it, and what's happening now. So, we'll have a Kern Cog meeting tomorrow evening around this time, and if anything important comes up, I'll lean into this microphone and share it with everybody here.
We, Skip and I, got to have the opportunity to go to the League of California Cities this last week, and we spent a lot of time talking to other councilmembers, mayors, city managers, you name it. And I put this on social media, but I want to make sure to say it here, it was a good, it's always a good chance to realize that the issues we have here, everybody else has them as well. And they don't, they're not always handling them as well as we are. Some people have it, you know, they have it buttoned up a little bit tighter, and that's okay. But there's always something to learn from each other. And sometimes it was the small things, like, hey, how are you running your meeting? How are you doing this? How are you doing that? We do it like this. And just sharing the small things, it makes a difference. And there's a lot of classes, so, League of California Cities goes on for three days. For two of those days, there's a steady round of courses, and there's several good speakers that show up. So, it's good, it's educational. I believe that I got a lot out of it. It's a chance for the League of California Cities to update all of its members, which we are, almost every single city in the state of California is a member, on any of their legislation and anything they've been working. So, it's a good time to sit down, get educated. Appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, I would have had LAFCO, but it got canceled for this month. I would be there. I was able to go to the protest hearing that happened, was that yesterday? That was yesterday. It was a pretty decent turnout. I think there were a lot of individuals that came either supporting, or were opposed, or were undecided. And I think there was a lot of good information that was given. The hospital had a representative there who answered a lot of questions. LAFCO was present, and so was the Inyo Kern Healthcare District. All in all, I think it was a very good meeting. It was able to answer a lot of, almost all the questions that people asked, but a really fruitful-type meeting, so.
Can I add something to that? The last day for the protest is November 19th.
Is it the 19th?
Yeah.
So, if you wish to protest, there are forms that you can fill out. They can be found on the LAFCO website. They were handing some out at the meeting as well, but make sure that you get those in before the 19th. Next, we have the City Managers' Report, and I just have to say that City Manager is just looking fantastic today. Less gray hair, at least.
So good, he can't turn his microphone on. Grab Skip's.
There we go.
He hasn't taken his City Manager 101 course yet.
I just wanted to update you guys after hearing all the talk on the Senior Center. I did receive, Nura says, "I'll unable to be here tonight." She did give me a list of updates for you guys. The Senior Center will be open at the extended hours per your guys' discussion by the Parks and Rec staff, starting this coming Monday, from, Monday through Thursday, I'm sorry, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. They're going to try these hours out for a month, see how it goes, and reevaluate from there. Other than that, I just wanted to say, go Crusaders, 7-0, got a huge win and homecoming. Boys have really banded together, it's been an absolute joy to be out there with them. That is it.
May I add, sir, what's happening tomorrow? Would you like to announce that at 11:00 AM? The pool bid.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so the pool, I did, I did.
Yes.
You know what's funny? I have that written down on the reminder of how many things are coming up, and I forgot to bring that. So, the pool bids come in tomorrow, we will open them at 11:00. I personally think we will receive over 10. We've had a lot of good questions, had to extend the bid one time at the request of all the contractors, but we're looking forward to opening this, reviewing contracts, awarding a contract, and hopefully getting this thing built for everybody.
At my office.
Yes, no.
My office.
Correct. If you wish to be in attendance, it will be opened at the City Clerk's Office, that's just up the stairs behind the elevator, and there'll probably be multiple contractors there, and we'll announce the bids publicly, and then go into the review process.
Thank you very much. Next, we have future agenda items. Are there any items from the council we should see on future agenda? All right, next, we move on to mayor and council comments. Councilman Gorman, do you want to lead us off?
I wanted to say, as a comment pertinent to what Travis Reed just shared with us, congratulations, Denise. She's been waiting three years to hear that the bids will be open. I'm sure she'll be there. And it's a significant milestone in getting the Sergeant Penny Pool built. So, there, big day.
So there, big day.
Councilman Hayman?
None.
Yeah, water gets brought up a lot and I know that it's always going to be a contentious subject. And I think it will be long after I'm on this council. When I'm gone, it's going to be rough for whoever's up here. That's just the way it goes with these things. And I think that as long as this council keeps making decisions off of the best science that they have available and they're trying to do the best thing for the community, that's all you can really do. I don't, there has been an effort since I got on this. So I was appointed in 2019, was officially elected in 2020. And I can tell you that there has always been an effort within this community to sway, to pull to one side, pull to the other. It's been ever-present and I'm sure it's not going to stop. And when the stakes are this high, that's the way it's going to be. But at least what I've noticed, and in my opinion, as long as I've been on the council, the council's done a pretty good job about holding, doing what they thought was right. And I think that's something that's commendable. So I wanted to offer that to the council. This isn't necessarily a pep talk, it's an I appreciate, I appreciate the council for doing that. And I appreciate the staff for working to get things out. I know it caused some strife, but a lot of information needed to get out and that happened. We'd heard constant requests. We're only hearing one thing. We want to hear the rest of it, so that's good. It's good that it got out. I think we're also, we're in a time of strife. As you've alluded to several times, Mr. Mayor, we are in a time of strife nationally, statewide. The community, right, we're all feeling a government shutdown. It causes stress in all of our lives. There's a pit in people's stomach about not being able to pay bills. And, you know, at the risk of being partisan, all I can say is it's because we have people in Washington, in my opinion, that could be working a little bit harder to get it complete. Once those games are over, maybe we'll feel better and move on with our lives. I think we're going to end up seeing the hospital pulled into a district and I think that's going to be a good thing for the future of this community. I think in the next couple of years, we're going to see a lot of things move ahead on this water situation and all these arguments and the dirty politics and the names that people call each other is going to be forgotten. And I hope that's the case because that's the way you're supposed to move forward in a small town. I think that going into this whole fall season has me pretty optimistic, right, about where we are as a city. And I look forward to see where we're going.
Thank you. As I've been doing recently, I want to highlight that on this day in 1973, Jolene debuted by Dolly Parton.
Legend.
Fun fact, she wrote that and I Will Always Love You, the same day. Just absolutely phenomenal. I talked with the hospital, they're making some movement on VA healthcare being provided at the hospital. So I commend them for continuing to stick with it and working with the heads of the Greater Los Angeles VA. And I'm looking forward to having our veterans have that access here. Speaking of the Navy, I was privileged with being able to be a guest speaker at the Navy Ball last Thursday for the 250th birthday of the Navy, which was on the 13th, so Monday. What an absolutely awesome experience. I served four years. I never once went to a Navy Ball. We had a small child at home. I didn't really seek out babysitting, so my wife and I didn't go. We got to go last Thursday and it was just an absolute joy. I spoke for some time. Honestly, I have no clue what I said. I have this thing where I just start winging it when I'm giving speeches, so that's either good or bad. But it was an absolute wonderful, the pomp and circumstance. They had a big band there playing music throughout the night, absolutely wonderful. So not this past Monday, the Monday before, I got to go and talk to Scout Troop 55 about local governance. And boy, those boys could get a degree in journalism because they just grilled me with questions. And it was absolutely interesting hearing, you know, the type of questions that they were asking. I know some of them were prepped for it, others were just shooting off the hip. But they asked me a question that I wasn't prepared for. And it was, what's the biggest problem with this city? And I had an answer that I thought I wanted to give and I was happy that there wasn't any reporters there. Sorry, Aaron, but I'm going to go ahead and say it anyway because I think it's important. Because it's not, I don't see it just as a problem of this city. I see it as a problem of this city, of this county, of this state, of this country, of this world. Robert Putnam wrote a book called Bowling Alone. It was about how we've just become so disconnected with our fellow man. And his qualitative assessment was he would go to local bowling alleys where there used to be teams and now it was literally people just going there to bowl alone. We don't have that connectedness. He attributed it to television. I think that we can take that a step further and now our phones make us so disconnected from our fellow person. But more importantly, we just don't have the people who want to help. And I know that's harsh. We have a lot of great organizations in this town who, their goal is to help. But they're probably hurting for recruitment. Because we don't have those individuals who want to step up, who want to go out and help someone just because they can. Normally, you're looking inward and saying, no, that's going to inconvenience me. I have something else to do. And I hope the 17 people that watch this on YouTube and the individuals here take a moment, find someone that needs help, just help them, right? That's the human condition. So that's, I wish I could be as hopeful, Councilman Blades, as you are for the fall. Maybe in the holiday spirit, more people will be helpful. I just came before the council meeting, I was at the Powderpuff game at Burrows. Fantastic energy, wonderful event. I went to support some of my former players that I've coached before. It was nice seeing them out there playing football. The first team I watched is absolutely dominated. I was really happy for the people I knew that was on that team. I want to highlight that ICS had their homecoming last Friday with a big win. What was the score?
62 to 22.
All right, so it was a close one. It was a close one. Way to let them have some hope. Do want to highlight that Burrows Homecoming is this Friday and we will have a guest announcer at the game. You all know him as the Chief of Police. So I will be sitting up in the booth with him as his spotter. Who knows if I'll tell him the right numbers or not? It's his voice going out, so he'll be the one blind for it. But really looking forward to that. Him and I have been able to be the spotter and announcer for one of us together at ICS. Just if you can, get out, support our youth, the sports that they're in. These kids work very hard through practice and then juggling school and what other commitments that they have. Get out there, support our local community. And one last thing, I just want to congratulate my wife. She got her master's degree on Saturday. She got to walk at Purdue University. Couldn't be more proud of her for finally realizing this dream. I'll tell a little story out of school. Her guidance counselor in high school told her that she should not apply to college, that she would not do well in college. And so for her to get her RN degree, her bachelor's, and now her master's, I just want to thank that guidance counselor for giving her the motivation that she can show them up. So that's it for us. We're going to adjourn, but thank you all for coming, the speakers that came up. I know it's daunting to come up and speak again, but thank you for doing it. Thank you for engaging. Thank you for attending. And everybody have a wonderful night and rest of your week. Thank you.